Welcome to the regular meeting of Brisbane Planning Commission. Today is -- Mike is on?
I think it's off, I think.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Okay.
Alex.
Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of Brisbane Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, January 23rd, 2018. I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Anderson?
Present.
Commissioner Mackin?
Here.
Commissioner Minier?
Here.
Commissioner Sayasan?
Here.
Okay. I've got the agenda in front of me. And anyone, has any suggestion to change the items on the agenda? The order of the item?
I do, if I may.
Okay.
I know we have a lot of members in the audience, probably for Thomas. But in looking at our agenda, my concern was that the zoning text amendment of cannabis business might be something that we could accomplish rather expeditiously. And then if Thomas ran overtime, it could be pushing this into another meeting. And I think that the council would probably, and staff, appreciate our getting this resolved. Does anyone else have suggestions or opinions?
Anyone else in the audience also has any concerns for doing this in case if we change the order of the agenda? No?
I think we can do it pretty quickly, so I'll second the motion.
Okay. So we will make a motion to adopt the agenda with the following changes. In the G, new business item, item number one will be placed at the end. It will be number two. And number two will be the first one on the agenda. That is, the public hearing zoning text amendment, RZ-1-18. Okay? So all in the favor of adopting the agenda with the revised order? Who wants to make a motion?
I see. I think Commissioner Sayasan already made it.
Yeah, we made the motion.
You want to make a motion with the changes?
Yes, yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Who wants to second now?
Did Commissioner Anderson?
I have a motion from Commissioner Mackin and a second from Commissioner Sayasan.
Yeah, I thought, okay.
So all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. The next item on the agenda is a consent item, which is the items that are listed as a consent calendar items are considered routine and will be acted upon collectively by one motion adopting the planning department's recommendation unless a member of the public, the commission, or its staff asks to remove an item to discuss it. Prior to the motion, the chairperson will ask if anyone wishes to remove an item from the consent calendar. So we have one item on the consent calendar, which is the approval of draft action minutes, January 9th, 2018. Anybody wants to add or make any changes or make a motion to adopt that, approve that draft action minutes of January 9th, 2018? I guess we all were present at that time, no? Or?
Yes. I think we were all present.
Okay. So can, may I have the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the draft action minutes of January 9th, 2018, a regular meeting as presented by the staff minutes.
I second the motion.
Okay. The motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the oral communication. And this is the time for anyone in the audience who want to speak before the commission on the items that are not the part of agenda. Any other item that you want to discuss that are not on part of the agenda, this is your chance. Anyone? Nope. We move to next item, which is written communication. And I think these were also part of the, I got two items here. They were also part of the package, right? Or these are new ones?
You have a couple items of written correspondence that were not included in your agenda packet.
Okay. So I will just read that for the record. One is written correspondence received, item G point one, from Joel Diaz. And subject is 99 Thomas Avenue. And it says, please approve.
Through the chair, if they're related to the other item, you could hold them until the item that's in question.
You can do that, or I can address it here, whatever. Your pleasure. No problem. Okay. With that, we move on to our new business. And as we indicated, we're going to address the item number two first, which is public hearing, zoning text amendment, RZ-1-18. And it has to do with the zoning text amendments to chapter 17 point 33, or title 17, zoning of the Brisbane Municipal Court to eliminate the prohibition of cannabis businesses within 600 feet of a school or daycare for properties located within the Crocker Industrial Park, which is TC-1 district, where such uses are conditionally permitted. The applicant is city of Brisbane. May I have the report from the staff? That's also the city, also the applicant.
Thank you, Chairperson. So the zoning text amendment before you tonight is to amend the recently adopted cannabis business regulations, which were adopted via council adoption of ordinance 617 in September of last year. Those regulations adopted a new chapter in the zoning ordinance, chapter 17 point 33, to regulate certain types of cannabis-related businesses. That includes manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, and limited retail delivery only in the Crocker Park District. Another provision of that chapter also requires that new cannabis businesses be located more than 600 feet away from schools or daycares. And this is consistent with the State Business and Professions Code. However, that same state code does allow jurisdictions to specify a different radius, which could be greater or less than 600 feet. So that is also an option available to the city. But when the ordinance was adopted originally, we kept the 600-foot prohibition. As applied to existing schools, daycares, and youth centers in Brisbane, this 600-foot buffer includes several properties in Crocker Park where those businesses are otherwise conditionally permitted. No other zoning districts other than Crocker Park where cannabis businesses could potentially be allowed are impacted by the 600-foot buffer based on current school and daycare locations. So subsequent to adoption of the cannabis business regulations, a prospective cannabis business interested in locating here in Brisbane noted that the 600-foot buffer would represent their perception of a significant constraint to establishing those businesses by basically eliminating several potential locations in a district where it would otherwise be conditionally allowed. So at the January 4th city council meeting of this year, the city council considered that situation and subsequently directed staff to draft some zoning text amendments to eliminate that buffer requirement as it pertains to Crocker Park. Based on lack of pedestrian connectivity between Lippman Middle School and sites in Crocker Park within that 600-foot radius, and also the fact that any conditional use permit application for a cannabis business would take into consideration adjacent uses, such as, you know, schools or daycare, as related to the public safety and welfare. So consistent with that direction, staff drafted some zoning text amendments before you tonight, as detailed in the red line text and resolution RZ-1-18. These zoning text modifications would eliminate the 600-foot buffer entirely. The reason for this recommendation is that, as it exists currently, the only school and daycare within 600 feet of any commercial district where we could conditionally allow a cannabis-related business is Lippman Middle School and Silver Spot Co-op. Other existing schools and daycare facilities are within residential districts where there are no potential properties that cannabis businesses could be established in due to the zoning limitations. Additionally, there are no existing or known proposed new schools or daycares anywhere within 600 feet of commercial districts where cannabis businesses are conditionally allowed. So that's the basis behind the recommendation to eliminate the 600-foot buffer entirely. I'll end our presentation there. And what staff is recommending, adoption of draft resolution RZ-1-18 to recommend approval of the text amendments to the council. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions for the staff?
If I may?
Ms. McKeon?
I just would like staff to clarify to anyone at home or in the audience that the cannabis businesses are not open to the general public. These are not retail storefronts. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And would you underscore that?
Sure. So again, in the Crocker Park District, which is the only district where cannabis businesses are conditionally permitted, cannabis businesses are defined as including light manufacturing, warehousing. The typical and light industrial use you see in Crocker Park, the retail use that's allowed is limited to delivery only, meaning there is no storefront, there is no walk-ins by the public. It is a private facility. The products are delivered to the customer rather than the customer coming there.
Thank you.
Anything else? Commissioner Anderson?
I have no particular objections to the zoning amendments as presented.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson?
No questions.
Okay. Now we will open up a public hearing. Anyone in the audience want to speak before the planning commission on this issue? I guess I don't see anyone interested in addressing that, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Anderson?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So deliberation on that item, there's not much to discuss. I guess we all agree that this will have very little or no impact on the current situation. So unless anybody wants to make any changes, we can go ahead and make a motion to approve this.
I make a motion that we approve the zoning text amendment, RZ-1-18.
Okay. I got a motion, then.
I will second the motion.
Okay. Second the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So motion carries. And I will read the appeals process.
I prefer to abstain on the vote.
Let me. Anyone may appeal the action of planning commission to the city council not later than 15 calendar days following the planning commission's decision. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the city clerk at 415-508-2110. Thank you very much. Now we move on to the second item, which is a public hearing on 99 Thomas Avenue, R-B-A Brisbane Acres Residential District. Design permit DP-2-16 slash grading permit EX-2-16 habitat conservation plan compliance permit HCP-1-16. And the applicant is Andrew Combe and Zee Vigen Ruwan. Owners, they are the owners and their, and application number is 007-350-170. Staff report, please.
Before the staff report?
Yeah, you have to excuse, okay.
They have a conflict of interest.
Okay. So Commissioner Anderson will be leaving the podium because he's within the circle of influence, or whatever you call that. So you may leave after this, if you like, Commissioner Anderson. Or if you want to come back, wait for a couple of hours. It's up to you. Just a moment, a technical difficulty here. Technical difficulties? Okay. Where is our export here? Ms. Julia?
Yeah. I'm going to trade.
Mr. Ken Johnson will be presenting that, right?
The applicant proposes to remove the existing ruins of a former single-family home from 99 Thomas Avenue and build a new home there. This is on a 1.2 acre lot in the Brisbane Acres RBA zoning district. The new home would be just over, or excuse me, just under 5,500 square feet, including the 534 square foot garage. Since the property is located on a ridge line within the RBA district, a design permit is required for development of a single-family home. The property is also located within the, this slide essentially shows the zoning districts in, kind of red in the middle is the site location. The property is also located within the San Bruno Mountain Habitat Conservation Plan area, or the HCP as we call it, that was established for the protection of endangered butterfly species. Given that, adoption of an HCP operating program is also part of this application suite. Site development would result in grading of approximately 1,400 cubic yards of cut and about 650 cubic yards of fill, and the remainder would be exported from the site. Since that grading is over 250 cubic yards of total grading, the planning commission is also required, and that's to provide a recommendation to the city engineer. The property is at the edge of the RBA district, as you can see there. And so it borders the R1 district and the R3 residential districts along the western and southern edges. These properties, bordering properties are already built out. The RBA properties to the north and east are vacant lands. This is a topography map of the site itself, and then you have Thomas Avenue coming up from the bottom of the slide, from the south. The Thomas Hill Ridge Line runs from the saddle of San Bruno Avenue, roughly parallel to Thomas Avenue and terminates on this lot. So there is a topographic knoll on the southeast corner of the lot that partially blocks views of the southern end of the site. The topography on site generally drops off from the southwest to northeast, as you can see. And the home is proposed in the center portion of the site with natural slopes of about 20% in that area. There's a steep drop-off north of where the home is proposed, and that drops down to a fairly level area, which is not proposed for development.
Do you have a pointer to point this out?
Sure.
So that people can get a better idea?
I am. Any of these will work. I'm going to try here. So I'll describe it from the site there, where you see the gray pattern running kind of north to south, a little bit north, northwest to southeast. That's essentially a drop-off because, and so the gray pattern is essentially topographic lines. And so as they're closer together there, that's the drop-off.
How much is that, the drop-off?
Pardon me?
How much is the drop-off?
It's about 60 feet at its most there, at its greatest point.
There we go.
So this is the drop-off area here, and this area here, and I'll have another slide that shows this coming up. This is where the home is proposed. Thomas Avenue comes up in this area here. And then this spot right in there, that's the existing ruins of the single-family home that was constructed back in 1941 and was abandoned years, decades ago, it seems, because it's just the supporting members that are left, no roof left.
And Bruno Avenue is?
And so San Bruno would be, yeah, be to the bottom. Let me back up. Yeah. So this map shows where San Bruno Ave is along here, running along the R3 zoning district and then R1 there. Thomas Ave runs right in there. And you have Tulare Street. And so the homes of Tulare Street, which are R1 in this portion, back on to the project site, as do these R3. Then you have apartment buildings on this side of Thomas Avenue. And some development, actually active development, 8 Thomas at the bottom, 88 Thomas is a single-family home site that was approved for a new home recently.
There is also?
And then vacant lands around this RBA district. These properties here are all vacant.
Isn't there a big drop on the upper edge where there, I think somebody dropped their vehicle also, it's way down below?
Right. So that is in this area, right here on the site, is where that drop-off is. So.
So the construction will not be in that area, right?
Correct.
Towards the front.
So I'll show you some more slides of that. So this lot and the adjacent RBA lots to the north and east are heavily treed. And you can see some are starting to fall here in this photo. This is just recent. And it's primarily a mix of eucalyptus and pine, which serve to obscure views of the site. Many of the pine trees have died off, as I mentioned. And there's further details on the site biology, and the tree inventory is also provided in the staff report. As I mentioned, an apartment building is located along the southern edge of the property with a block wall along that. So essentially, it kind of turns its back to this property. And also, as I mentioned, the homes, which should be in the background behind those trees along Tulare, so the Tulare Street homes are further down the slope here.
Now how far is?
So this shows the, and in this slide and the others, the site plan has been turned, so you have north facing to the right on the page. Yes?
Yeah. Where is the Soborwall's property in reference to this?
Dr. Soborwall's property is along this boundary here.
Down below, towards?
Down below. And then further, further out as well is about 10 acres, so it's quite a, quite an area. But essentially, he borders on this southern, I'm sorry, I want to say southern now, on this bottom edge, which would be the eastern edge of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the home would step down, essentially, the slope. So the project site slopes down this way, in this direction, and the home steps from one story with the garage up here, one story here, and then steps down the slope. So that's the three-story side. And we'll get into a little bit more, and we can always come back to this slide as The design might be identified or is identified. Staff has called it high-style international design. It's characterized by sections of the house that are cantilevered and large expanses of And so that's, you can see the elevations, which are also on the wall there, but these would be the side elevations. And then front elevation is on the top, and the rear elevation would be on the bottom of this slide.
The front would be facing Thomas, or?
So yes, the front on the top would be the side-facing Thomas. And you have the garage in the foreground here. And then this side would be facing out towards the bay. To the north. And the exterior materials are western red cedar siding and complementary stone veneer panels and copper fascia. And the stone is also proposed for surfacing the retaining walls on site. So throughout the site, they would be using that consistent stone veneer.
That retaining wall will not be visible from the street, right?
It, that particular one would not be. There is a cut essentially, so that it flattens out a little bit at the top naturally, but they're going to bring that down a bit more. And so there would be shorter retaining walls that would run parallel with the driveway. I'll come back here. So along here, there would be shorter walls with a max height of about five feet in, right in here. But the taller walls would be this, this two-wall sequence essentially with planters in between. And you could see trees to be proposed. And they don't show up very well, but there's also several trees to be retained along this edge, as well as a couple on this edge as well. But what you're seeing in that other image is, is that stepped wall sequence here. And that essentially is to provide for a proper grade for the driveway in this, and I'll touch on it some more, but this Y-shaped driveway is to provide for fire access turnaround. So this was required by the fire department. Since there is no turnaround.
It's like a hammerhead, right?
Correct. Right. So the project description, as I mentioned, it's a 1.2 acres, 20,000 square feet is the minimum, so it's well over the minimum lot size. The slope, 20% in the building site area, and actually about 20% overall, but that, you have a three to two rise to run on the steep slope part. It's just under 5,500 square feet, including the 534 square foot garage. The design style, I mentioned, the height is almost two feet under the maximum allowed of 35. And then it's about 10 and a half on the front side at the lowest point. Lot coverage as well under the maximum at 7.5. The floor ratio is well under the maximum of .72, but there is a cap of 5,500 square foot, and so it's approaching that, but still under. And then setbacks, you have the front, it's pretty far setback from the front at 120. The west side is where it comes closest at 15 feet, but then it moves away. I'm going to go back to this again. So that setback right there is 15 feet. And then because of the shape of the lot, you have closer to 50-foot setbacks on this side. And likewise, about 50 feet on this side, and about 140 out that way. So that's the closest, but it is compliant with the code requirements.
What's the width of the driveway?
The width is 20, as I recall. The dimensions are on there.
The minimum required is 20 feet for fire compliance?
It is 20.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's actually wider in spots. It's, if I, or it was my driveway thing. So yes, in this part, we have 20, but then, as you come in here, it actually, I highlighted the driveway Y shape, but it's actually, this is all essentially kind of driveway area. And then that, these yellow spots indicate where parking is. And parking is at nine, two covered in the garage per code requirement, and then another seven that could be placed around in this parking court, if you will. Whereas only two more are required. So four is the minimum, and they have nine here. And I mentioned the grading already. So the municipal code includes a number of design permit findings. The application meets all of the applicable findings, and discussion of those was attached with the agenda report. A few of these I highlighted in the agenda report. All of them were discussed in the All of them were discussed in the attachment to the report and they're all included in the resolution. But there were a few that kind of give a, a, a good, um, I guess highlight the character of the development. That was the, um, ridge line and hillside findings. The hillside is on the next slide. There's eleven different design permit findings that are applicable, a few more that are not applicable that, that had to do with commercial development, plus four more for grading. And then one of those includes the HCP compliance. So, um, the, the ridge line development, as was mentioned in the agenda report, the, the site is essentially occluded from view and will remain largely that way with the project since a great number of tall trees are located off-site, uh, surrounding the project. So there are no significant public views that would be affected by the proposal. The applicant had story poles placed to show the outside corners and the height of the house and, um, and the garage. And they also put some orange netting up so those could be viewed from off-site since the poles do get lost in the trees otherwise there. And only essentially peak, peak of, uh, views are, are seen from the different vantage points that are mentioned in the finding.
It doesn't block any of the ridge line views, right?
No, no. Um, regarding the, the scale form proportions and materials finding, the, the design style is characterized. Um, it's again that international style with the cantilevered sections of the house with large, um, ribbons of windows. Um, and this gives the building an air of lightness and, and, um, it's naturally articulated also that way, which serves to break up the mass of the building. Um, the, the Western red cedar and the stone veneer panels complement the building well, uh, as does the copper on the fascia. Um, the scale, as I've mentioned, it starts at one story and then, um, moves up to three stories with the basement level. Um, where it slopes down and at the highest point, it's at thirty, just over thirty-three feet. And then down to ten and a half. Um, it meets the requirement and, and steps with, with the land essentially. Um, and while at nearly fifty-five hundred square feet, the home is large. It's located on a large site of approximately one point two acres. And it's in scale with this setting and it's under that, that cap for the Brisbane acres. Um, also with the proposed coverage of seven and a half percent, um, as well under the twenty-five percent. So it, it fits well with the site. Um, regarding compatibility with adjacent development, the proposal meets this finding too. Um, it meets all of the, the findings, just highlighting a few of them here. Um, there were four primary issues to address in citing the proposed home. First was allowing for adequate fire apparatus turnaround. Um, geotechnical consultants had a, a, um, eighteen-foot setback requirement from the face of the steep slope. And so that's met and the fifteen-foot zoning setback is met as well. And then there's landscaping, which helps to, um, integrate the structures in with the site. The driveway geometry and the setback from the slope, as I mentioned, were all designed in consult- consultation with the applicant's engineering team, as well as the fire department and the, the city's geotechnical engineer consultant who did a peer review on this, and it meets all those requirements. Um, I mentioned the setback, that it's, it meets that setback and it actually, um, the fifteen-foot is a minimum. Um, it meets that and then it actually gets closer to fifty-foot. So it's, it's, uh, respects the, the space on the site. In terms of, I'll jump down to grading and on the subject of grading review, the intent of the planning commission's review of grading is to address aesthetic issues which may arise. While the technical aspects of grading are addressed by the city engineer through the grading permit that would be pulled at the same time as the building permit. Um. So the planning, uh, commission has findings, these are recommended findings essentially that the commission adopted in oh-three, although they're not embedded into ordinance. But it meets all of these requirements as well. And finally, on the HCP compliance, the project, uh, site complies with the HCP, um, requirements. This includes a biological assessment for determination of potential impacts on special species and establishment of a operating program for the site. And that is included, that draft operating program is included in your resolution and that went through the county parks, which is the plant operator. It also went on to, uh, state and federal fish and wildlife agencies, which, which have, uh, jurisdiction over endangered species. And, um, given the low likelihood of establishing a viable habitat for butterfly, butterfly species of concern, even with planting host plants, given the separation of this site from, from where there is actually habitat areas. The county had suggested a one-time and loofah be paid to the city as, um, essentially go to a fund that the city would buy other lands that would actually serve as viable habitat. And, and the city's already purchased a number of acres and the upper acres, this is lower acres here. Um, so that's, that's consistent with the HCP and really came from a county suggestion, but the applicant has agreed to that, so that's included in the operating program. That's in addition to an annual fee assessment, um, that's paid to the county for ongoing maintenance, management of the habitat area. And the operating program also includes obligations for invasive species control so that those don't start on-site and spread to off-site areas, as well as pesticide, um, limitations and maintaining a fire buffer around the residence. Um, so again, that operating program's in the resolution. So in closing, staff recommends that the planning commission conditionally approved design permit DP two sixteen, grading permit EX two sixteen, and the Habitat Conservation Plan Compliance Permit HCP one sixteen uh, per staff memorandum with the attachments. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Namakir, you have any questions?
Thank you, Ken. Couple things of interest, uh, due to the location above Tulare Street and a house from the nineteen forties. I read about the demolition plans and the, I can't remember what you call them, the whales, straw whales and all that. Has anyone examined the existing home to be demolished for any kind of hazardous materials abatement? House from the nineteen forties could have asbestos, lead paint. Um, I'm concerned about even with straw whales and if it's raining or any migration of that to the homes below because we're talking about roughly, well, it's actually quite a ways from the existing house. But if there was water runoff, has anything, has Matt been identified in that house?
There's nothing that I am aware of that's been, uh, tested, um, for that house. The, the applicant may comment on that further if there's something that I'm not aware of. But this would be, it would have to do a demolition permit. That could be a separate permit or it could be tied directly to the, the building permit. Regardless, they will have to comply with, with the, um, state's requirements for demolition and recycling. They actually have to do a, a recycling form for demolition jobs. And so if there's anything that's left of that structure that, that is hazardous, they would have to deal with it at that time.
Okay. Um, also, uh, and, and some of these, feel free to, to direct me to, they may have the relevant, um, engineers and experts here tonight to address some of these. But I'm just going to start from the page G one point one four, which is one of the earliest sheets we have. And I noted our Y-shaped driveway and near the bottom portion where there's a curve of that Y, an outdoor kitchen. My concern was that this is also in that Y turnaround. Has anyone looked at that? Because it seems like that's an entertaining area and it defeats the purpose of this being an effective and utilitarian turnaround space. And as, as we all have driveways and patios, sometimes things tend to migrate where furniture could go there. I just, I was surprised to see that on that outside area. It's down at the, the apex of the curve and then just slightly over to the right. And you can see a counter, looks like, it almost looks like a sink, could be a barbecue underneath the two eighty there. And if you would like, I can find the other page where it references that that is an outdoor kitchen. You can find it on G one point two seven, where it says outdoor kitchen and bar. It's under the, um, one of the landscape sheets. The, the parking.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
So this, this area would be outside of the, the fire department required, um, turnaround area. Um, in terms of its location here, I, I defer, I guess, to the applicant as to why they would place it here versus another place that would be not quite so.
I think it's going to impact the hammerhead turnaround.
Right, exactly.
Because it's right there.
Right.
You, you, you just, it, it just seems like then that, that turnaround driveway becomes a patio, not.
Right.
And, and it seems like it should be very clearly delineated that this is a turnaround.
Yeah, you need that on both sides, that, uh, hammerhead. So if it's going to be there, definitely it's going to impede in, impede into that.
Right, okay, and then I have another question for you. On G one point two seven, you were just there, which is shades of green landscape and architecture. Under material notes on the left, number five, grind all healthy woody shrubs and trees that have been removed from site and non-pressure-treated wood scraps for planting mulch. Grind on site. There are forty-nine trees slated for removal and they're all going to be ground on site?
So this, this is something that, um, and I, I think we, we need to, this was brought up, I, I believe, on another application recently where we had a condition of approval to, um, make sure they were not ground up on site. And so that's, this landscape plan is, we consider this a, um, more of a conceptual plan. They actually will have to do a final landscape plan that's, that will be required to be, um, in compliance with the water conservation and landscaping ordinance. But, um, I, I think, given the number of trees and the concerns that have been brought up before, if it's the, the planning commission's pleasure, you may want to have a condition that those not be ground up on, on site.
And, and so in that same sentence, it's a bit ambiguous. And non-pressure-treated wood scraps. Are we talking wood scraps from the demolition or wood scraps from ongoing construction? And wood scraps from ongoing construction with a, a residence this size could be an enormous amount of wood. And I also strongly do not recommend doing that on site.
Right, and that would be the same category, I think, of a condition you may want to add.
I applaud the idea, I applaud the sentiment, but the reality, I think, could bear a little differently. Um, let me see, I may have another question. The, and again, this may have to defer to the landscape architect. I'm on G one point three O. Domestic, uh, I'm under irrigation performance notes. Bottom left, number eight, domestic water supply to be protected from the irrigation system. It was unclear to me, reading through this, what the irrigation water system sources. I noted that there's a rainwater capture. I note that the domestic water supply is to be kept separate, but there's nothing here that tells me where the irrigation system water's coming from. So that's something, if someone could, could actually clarify that.
Right, so what, what they can capture and reuse on site, they would. But any other water that's needed would be from the domestic supply. And all that would be tied in from the Thomas Avenue side, so it would be tied to city water. So anything over and above what they, what they can use from, from recycling captured rainwater would be city water.
And I, I didn't, well, perhaps they can address it then, the, the runoff from the roof, if that is what's going into the holding tank. Because that, that certainly would provide a lot of recycled water. Um, let me see if I had one more.
And the, and this one needs a little clarification, the way it's written is very confusing. So maybe we can ask the applicant.
Right, and then I have on page G one point three two. And in the middle of that page, we have site preparations. And this area is talking a lot about demolition. And under number two, I found quite interesting. Demolition should include removal of building structures, foundations, reservoirs, utilities, including underground pipelines, septic tanks, leach fields, seepage pits, cisterns, mining shaft. Anyone care to elaborate on that?
So I, I, what happens oftentimes, and I, I don't know that the landscape architect is here, or actually, no, I'm sorry, this is the engineers, but, but they will tend to have standard site notes that they carry over that cover the gamut of things and.
Oh, and I was hoping for a better story, Ken, come on.
Right.
Okay, tunnels, et cetera?
Yeah.
Okay.
Catch, catch all.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And let me see if I had any more and then I'll stop talking here. Um. No, I think I'll, I'll stop there and reserve some comments for later, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Kassan.
Um.
Sorry, Sam.
Yeah, I just, um, had one question concerning attachment H. Um, pages G point one, point one-three-four and five. And my main concern is just, if I understand correctly, the residence is, is going to be set back eighteen feet from that precipitous slope, correct?
That's correct, at the foundation level, it will be set back that far. It does cantilever over, a little bit closer, but.
And my only concern is, in reading this report, it talks about potential slab failures and, um, you know, and, and potential instability if there's a major earthquake. And I, my only concern is if they're going to do the minimum recommendation, you know, should we not suggest maybe more than that? should we not suggest maybe more than that, just to be, you know, on the safer side?
So this is something that the geotechnical is, of course, given the, the slope there is of foremost concern, to make sure that we have that well in hand. And, and we, we, the city, in addition to the applicant's geotechnical engineering team, also hires its own geotechnical engineer as a consultant to do peer review on this and, and make sure that it is not just minimum, but that it's, it's safe. And, and so, the, essentially, they're gonna be looking at the recommendations here, but they're, they're going, going to be involved throughout the building processes as well. So not only the plan check for the building permit and grading, but also inspections on site to make sure that, that it's being done correctly. The, I believe the geotechnical engineer is, is here for the applicant tonight, so he can speak perhaps a little bit more on, on that, but.
Okay. I can ask you, okay.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a couple of questions, generic to the, any kind of design review. One is the solar power. Are we gonna have the requirement that they should have the solar power panels?
Yes, that is a condition of approval. It's, it's part of the recent ordinance, so, so it is, it's a requirement as a minimum. And, and as, as the, as the ordinance, the intent of the ordinance was essentially to, to have a minimum size, but that opens the door essentially for them to right-size it to their, their building, which, which I would hope that they wouldn't do just the minimum, but they will have a minimum requirement per the energy generation ordinance.
And what about the LEED standard?
The, I'm sorry.
LEED standard, you know, for the sustainability? Is it gonna be a platinum or, or gold or silver or what standard?
Oh, LEED standard, there's, there's not a LEED requirement. It would comply with the Cal Green requirements.
Should we impose something like that in a building of this size?
We don't really have the, the regulations in place to, to be able to impose.
Because at some point, we are to start encouraging the adoption of the LEED standards. And some of the cities have started doing that for a major, bigger project. Small homes, maybe not, but this is a substantial size, about 5,000 square feet, so it's quite a bit of area.
Right, our, our ordinance kicks in for, for, the green building ordinance for the city kicks in at 20 housing units.
Okay, I mean, this is something, in future, we should address that. And the other question I have was the color scheme. Are any of the planning commissioners interested in looking at the color scheme to see the visual impact and how, because they brought the sample material also.
Oh, that's great.
And I think we, we should really evaluate that to see if that's, that's gonna look proper at that particular site or not. So you, you don't have the three-dimensional rendering, huh? Oh, yeah, on the, that's true, but not the model itself. Okay. The other question I have is regarding the soil analysis. I'm a soils engineer also, geotechnical. I just want to ask the question regarding slope stability analysis, whether you comprehensively finished that and also the liquefaction, because this area is very close to where the USGS identified as a highly liquefied well zone. So I want to make sure that proper mitigation measures have been implemented in your, in your design review, especially the, the foundation part closer to the deep slope there. They're gonna be in tie-downs and all of that. I guess you're gonna work with the structural engineer regarding that, because that will be very critical concerns that one of the commissioners mentioned. And unfortunately, it's not within the purview of the planning commissioners, but I will put it in the record, Ken, that this, this should be carried to our city engineer, that the, regarding the slope stability and, and the area close to the deep ravine, should be properly designed and reviewed. I'm sure that they have the geotechnical engineer, but detailed designs should have some kind of a whole bags and tie-backs and all of that to make sure that this building doesn't move. And, and also the detailed liquefaction analysis should be done for this particular site, because it is one of, within the USGS concerned sites, so. Okay. With that, no other questions?
I, I just would like, one, just to dovetail off of what the chair has said, and also, Commissioner Sayasan, Ken, if you could show us, I'm looking at G.1, .14, the notation saying, "No portion of the proposed building foundations occur within 18 feet of the designated cliff edge shown dashed." And there's several dashed lines in there. Just for my benefit and the other commissioners and anyone at home, would it be possible for you to bring up that slide and with the pointer, show us where that cliff edge is?
Did I lose it again? Oh, just too light in here. So right, sorry about my shaky hand, right in here. And so we're talking about that, that's that closest distance right in there.
Yes, fairly, fairly close, actually.
So if the driveway's 20 feet wide, that looks like it's about 18 to 20 feet.
Right.
How, how deep is the bedrock, do you know? Maybe the geotechnical engineer can answer.
I'll, I'll defer to the geotechnical engineer.
One of the requirement will be to go all the way to the bedrock, tie into the, so that will be a critical information to know also, to be putting, to put in in the record. Okay, any other questions for the staff before we open the public hearing? Okay. Now we will open a public hearing. We will start with the applicant, and I guess the geotechnical engineer is the first one in the line? Architect, okay, okay. So can you please state your name for the record?
You know, several two and a half year process, and there are, not only, there's not only a geotechnical, but a, another geologist working with Ted Searns over at Cotton and Associates.
Ted Searns, yeah.
He can, he can get into the, the, the kind of investigation that went on, in-depth investigation that went on, on the site. But in general, hmm, is this not working? I thought we had no technical problem, but evidently we haven't, we, ah, wait a minute.
We do have the technical problem, sorry about that.
Uh, let's see here.
This day, this age of technical innovations, it's still.
But as that's, as this is coming up, essentially, we started two and a half years ago. Fantastic site, obviously, incredible place, Brisbane, unusual. I grew up in the Bay Area. When I was a kid, there was something else in front of Brisbane, which is no longer there. And, but I did venture up and it was a very unusual sort of a hill town arrangement. It's very unlike anything else. As a professional, I started getting involved, started going to IRG all the time, and that's when I started wandering up into Brisbane. And then about two and a half years ago, I met Andrew and his family. They'd found this piece of land. This is a recent photograph of what's up there. This is, it's, 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 it's kind of got everything going for it. It's a fabulous place, it's got great views, it's got a haunted house, it's got a, a great tagging wall, it's got trees falling down.
Maybe they should keep the haunted.
Yeah, we can scroll, oh. There we go. And this one, in the, this was fully extent when we first looked at the property and it's, it's, the pines are all going. At the time also, Helen and Andrew had no children. We were discussing what kind of house they would need. They've got three now. As you can see, they're still young and energetic, so we're not really sure where this will end, but.
Each, three children in two years?
Yes, yes. A view of the, the haunted house from below and the adjacent apartment building. There are other activities going on at the site. There's sort of mountain climbing going on off the cliff edge. And there is one of those vehicles at the bottom of the cliff. It's actually on the neighbor's property.
Yes.
Not quite sure how it got there. This, this drawing shows some of the lines you were asking about, so obviously, there's the Y-shaped fire turnaround or the hammerhead that was, you know, a long process of working out with the fire marshal. This was the area, the barbecue area you were talking about, sort of in there. The other line, this red line here, is the 18-foot setback. That was a result of probably nine months or so of investigation of the subsoil with the Geotech, Ted Searns, Cotton and Shire and Associates, David Hexter, who is here today, who's our geologist, and, and a survey crew actually mapping the cleavages and cracks and so forth, and mapping where they likely go. And he, he can speak to that in greater depth. And then, of course, up at the, on the west side is the 15-foot setback, but as you can see, we just get to it in this one area and then we step much further back. These are the houses on Tulare that are, present a one or two-story face towards our lot, but then step down to Tulare, three and four stories below. The, I wanted to point out a couple of things, just in zoning the site or thinking about how the site would be used. This whole area for their burgeoning family, this is all kind of safe play area now. Cliffs, cliff edge is protected with a fence. The bedrooms, this whole west wing of the property of the house is bedroom uses. And the idea was that the center space, this outdoor space, and this wing, those are the very active parts of the house. The kitchen is here, family living with doors going in and out, and then the great space with the view over these houses to the north. That's all been, that's all zoned away from the backs of the adjacent neighbors, because these are the neighbors that could potentially notice a change. Obviously, the apartment building has bathroom windows facing the lot, and there's nothing to date down here. To tag on to what Commissioner Mackin was referring to with the demo of the house that's here, of course, that's gotta be tested. And like any demo, there, there will be a J-number, there will be asbestos testing, possibly other testing, but it, it, it doesn't appear like there was ever even a garage there. I'm, I'm involved with a bunch of Napa houses right now, and there we have to test for plastics and, and other things. Here, it's probably going to be asbestos, and there probably is some, and it will definitely be tested, not only because it's the law, but it's the right thing to do when you have children running around here. The landscape architect is here, and that's Eva Hochland from, I've slaughtered her name, I'm sure, but from Shades of Green. How do you say your name properly? Okay. She can answer some of the questions about the trees to be removed, the screening trees that we're proposing to plant along the western side of the site. And then there's some, some other orchard areas and so forth that the Comm family has requested as part of the development of the site. This is just a pretty picture that landscape architects did at my request to sort of give a better overview of how the site might actually feel. We're not developing any of this, right? This is all left as it is. The trees along the perimeter here are not on our property. Those are all eucalyptus. There is one tree that we're gonna take out that straddles the property line. We've actually been asked by the apartment building owner to, to remove that, so that was already underway. And I think for now, that is, those are my comments. And if you have any questions, or if you'd like to hear from the other experts first, please let me know.
You touched upon the outdoor kitchen, but then you moved on, so what will be, you know, based on the concerns that you've raised up?
Right.
What you can do to?
Well, I'm curious, it's a fixed-in-place kitchen, and I understand the, the issue with any of, any kind of parking turnaround, whether it's, or even a driveway and access, is that people could use it for other reasons. I would be worried about this area if the barbecue wasn't fixed in place. You know, if that was just a barbecue area where people could hang out, you might very well start finding the barbecue or the pizza oven sitting out here in the middle of the turnaround, but.
The problem is, it's very difficult to control, you know?
Yeah.
So, and this area has to be kept clear.
Right, that's right.
For the fire safeties.
That's right, like every fire access zone.
Yeah, it has to be clear.
Absolutely.
That's why it's not a good location for that particular use.
Well, and that's something we can speak with the Combs about. Maybe they'd be open to relocating that, so it's not a.
There's plenty of space to put somewhere else, you know?
Yes.
Very big site.
Absolutely.
Okay, any questions for the?
No, I, I'd just like to make a comment in looking at the plans. They seem very well thought in terms of all the different aspects, the materials, the placement of the rooms, the different stories, minimizing the height. I applaud you on all of that. I had one question, and I don't know whether it should go to landscaping or whether you can answer. The, as designated, one of the parking areas, the crushed stone behind the garage, if that's to be used for regular parking, is that a problem in that, I assume underneath that hillside is stabilized, because that's starting to go downhill again towards Tulare and those other properties? But is that something advisable for continuous parking? Because the, the rest is, is the cobblestones and I would.
Right, right.
Other than aesthetics, which landscaper might want to address, I see other cobblestone walk, or not cobblestone, but gravel walkways, so it may be to pull it together, but the parking aspect of that.
Well, first of all, obviously, it's not required parking, because we have other space for, but even if it is, it could be changed. But I'd probably defer to both Eva and David. David can, can address it from a geologist's, sort of a soils guy's point of view, and Eva could address the, the stability right at the surface.
Because I think the parking is commendable in that, being at the end of Thomas, if there was any entertaining, that's a difficult area to park.
Right, you can see what happens there now.
Right, so to have it on site is a real. So to have it on site is a real well-fought concept.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
No questions.
Thank you, and who's next on the line?
Would you like the landscape architect or the?
Sure, but I have to learn how to say a last name. If I just say Eva.
And then after all this, I'd like the most important people to come up and talk about why they want to live here.
There will be, given chance. So Eva, come on over. You may have to spell your name for the record.
I can do that. Do you want me, H A U?
Oh, I was gonna say, it's okay, we can call up later.
It's okay, you're okay.
Can I get back to that landscape? Oh, there.
Do you want my landscape planner?
Just have that colored one, I think that's probably. Yeah, so my name is Eva Hoagland from Shades of Green. And it's been a pleasure to work on this project. I would say one of the challenges here is because of that big turnaround, we have a lot of hardscape. And, and that is the entrance to the house and trying to make that, use nice materials and, and kind of break it up in, in these two different kind of stone materials and, and get a little relief. So it doesn't get too hard. And that was one of the reasons for using that crushed stone paving. And, and it, it will be built up. It's sitting on top of a retaining wall. It will have a little curb, so it's not going to just wash down the hill. And it will be built up on base rock. And so I don't think we will see a lot of runoff because it's so flat. The other thing is, um, do a, a screen and a buffer towards the houses below the house. So, so, you know, both, both the new house and the existing houses get some privacy. And we used a lot of native materials. Some oaks and red buds and, and a lot, um, toya and, and a lot of the smaller ground cover are, are also native. Yeah, I mean, the kitchen, the outdoor kitchen, it is a fixed-in-place thing. But I mean, we can, we can discuss with them and if it's a, there is other places to put it.
Are you gonna be completely, you know, the next door apartment building, this landscape will cover the entire, that face so that you don't see through the bathrooms or anything, right?
Yes, yeah, so there will be some screening there.
Screening.
Yeah. And, and just to address your questions earlier, the grinding of the tree, that's also kind of a boilerplate comment. And I, I see your point, there's way too many trees on this lot too. Maybe you use some few of them, but not, not all of them.
We can open the factory here.
Yeah. Yeah, and then, you know, we, we did a little fruit orchard and a little lawn for the kids to play on on the side there. And, and kind of a path down towards a little observation deck. So you can kind of enjoy seeing that, you know, the cliff and the drama of the lot. Yeah, if you have any more questions, I'd be happy to.
Instead of lawn, do you have any other suggestions to minimize the use of the water?
Absolutely, yeah. We can, we can use a native lawn that probably reduces the water use by thirty to fifty percent. Or we could potentially do a ground cover like diamante or something that can reduce it even more.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next on the line. Is geotechnical engineer?
I, I have a name which also sometimes requires some assistance. It's Hexter.
I used to know this, another soils engineer, his name was Baxter.
No, it's not me. So I, I, I was not asked to prepare a presentation, so I don't have actually any, anything to show you directly. But I did take some notes as I listened to the three of you raise some of your concerns. And so hopefully I can address them, you know, and do so as best as I can, obviously. First of all, I'm, I'm not a geotechnical engineer. I'm an engineering geologist.
I see.
Okay, so I'm a geologist who understands a fair amount of engineering. And there are geot, engineers who understand a lot of geology and we kind of meet in the middle. And so I work with the geotechnical engineers intensely. But I'm not legally a geotechnical engineer. I can't give certain recommendations as you would understand.
We used to fight with the, we used to fight with engineering geologists.
There can, there can be some disagreements on occasion.
Yeah.
So first of all, let me describe the investigation that was conducted for the site. And tell me if I'm rambling on too long, I'll try to be as concise as I can. Very well-known Bay Area firm, Bay Area Geotechnical Bag, Geotechnical Group, conducted the initial investigation. I was not involved at that time. They did have a certified engineering geologist, which I am. And the investigation consisted of test pits, six of them, I believe. The deepest they were able to get was four feet or so. Most of them were like two feet. This was with a, a heavy-duty backhoe. So what they're in, what the site is on, is on Franciscan Formation sandstone, primarily extremely hard and competent. The backhoe is not able to get to great depth, which correlates or relates to your question about liquefaction. For those who don't know, liquefaction is a geologic condition or occurrence where loose sands, which are saturated, literally liquefy during an earthquake. Examples being the Marina District and the damage there in the nineteen eighty-nine earthquake, the collapse of the Cypress Freeway in Oakland and then eighty-nine earthquake and a lot of nineteen oh six earthquake damage. It's a seismic occurrence. And so we, we do not have liquefiable materials at the site. It's, it's, it's not a, not a concern. Nearby, of course, just down below in the lower elevations, but not at the site.
Now, you, you didn't take, get any core samples beyond four feet?
They did not, no, because they weren't able to, literally. They did not, it would use a, you'd need a drill rig with a, a rock bit to go, to go to core deeper.
Because when I was building my house, they required me to do a drill up to twenty feet.
Really?
Deep into the sandstones. And I was required to go twenty feet deep into the rock. So surprised that you stopped at four feet.
There are reasons to do that, logical reasons. So the site, it was not deemed to be necessary. And we worked very closely with the Towns Geotechnical Reviewer, who's an engineering geologist, as myself, Ted Sayer. And he's like among the toughest reviewers I work with around the Bay Area. He works for quite a number of communities. And he had comments, and I'll get to those in just a minute. But we, we did not work just in a vacuum. In other words, hand in hand with the Towns, Towns consultant on this, on this project. So Bag prepared a geotechnical engineering report and Mr. Sayer, and there was a setback established. I'm not sure exactly how many feet it was, and he was happy with that from a static point of view. However, he was concerned about earthquakes and earthquakes causing this, you know, relatively steep slope, inclined slope, which if, as far as I understand, is the head of a, an old quarry from before the nineteen thirties. Is, is that right? Mention was made that somebody was familiar with that?
That's, that's what I recall hearing when we met with Ted on the site. But I'm not, I'm not sure if that was.
Right.
Kind of a, more of a discussion of was it or if it was definitive? But I, I do recall that being mentioned.
Well, it's not a natural feature and I'm, I'm pretty certain from what I've known before also. And I've worked in that area at times in the past. It was, it was an old quarry. What's remarkable about that slope is the lack of, of failure that has occurred on the slope. There's a small talus pile at the base, but in eighty-some-odd years, there's been almost no loss of, of rock from that face except the small talus pile on one side of it. But as Ted, as Mr. Sayer asked us to look more into the seismic concerns, what I did was to spend about six hours on the property mapping cracks, fractures and any other features, both on the face of that slope and elsewhere in the property, and developed a map of those features. The concern is that you have, if you have a slope, let me just show basically like this, and you have shallower discontinuities, fractures, joints or bedding, you can have slippage along those joints. However, that's not the case at the site. They're all very, very steep and there's really very little likelihood that during an earthquake, you'll have any more than just very minimal.
How about the water getting into that?
How about what?
The water getting into those pieces and the.
They're basically closed. Certainly water will transmit through, it's not a monolith. There will be some water getting through.
Because the sandstone has a, is, as you know, is very, very fractured easily. And when there is a water path there, you're gonna see some stability problem.
There, there's no question that water, of course, is a, is a concern. However, here, they're basically closed and the fractures are oriented so that it does not concern me. It's, it's really a solid rock. If we were to drill and take cores, if you're familiar with Rock Quality Index, we'd have basically a continuous core with very little fracturing. So I'm, I have total confidence, and so did Mr. Sayer in reviewing the work that we did. And the eighteen-foot figure actually to respond to your concern is, is really quite conservative for this location. It's not a minimum set anywhere according to law or, or practice. It's, was based basically on the observations.
And you have to calculate the stability curve to see how far.
Well, it wouldn't be a standard calculation because it's rock.
Yeah.
It's not a soil condition, in other words. Literally, if you take your hammer, it'll bounce back at you. The other factor is that whatever softer weathered soil has occurred, and I believe you were concerned about the driveway area and the stability of that area. I don't recall how many feet, there's a small amount of excavation, is that right? How many feet down? Three feet. So we're going to be down, any potentially soft material that might result in a problem for the driveway is going to be removed. So the bedrock will be there. The driveway basically sits on this hard resistant rock. And so the driveway is, is totally stable. The only concern that Ted Sayer had was right on the side of the driveway adjacent to the slope. It's not as steep where the driveway comes in. But he requested some means of, of ensuring that the driveway, because it's a little closer than the eighteen feet that is for the foundations, that, so there is a plan to drill closely spaced piers right along that slope, which will go down at great depth and totally stabilize that small stretch of the driveway, which is on that east-facing slope. So that has been accounted for as well. Let's see, were there any other?
Are you planning to put any riprap on the side where the slope is really steep so that it provide additional stability?
With the, I, I believe that slope to be stable as it is, but just to be conservative, the piers will provide that stability. So no, there's no plan at this time to put in.
If you drive over the San, South San Francisco, they're two sister city. They had the problems with the even not as steep slope as you have. And it starts slipping, so they provide the riprap, which is a cheap solution. So something maybe you have to consider at some point.
Well, the part of the driveway, I believe you would have to encroach on the adjacent property. So that would be one limitation to, to that. You'd have to obviously key the riprap into the, the, the base or otherwise it'll just slide away. So the solution of using the drilled piers was, was selected as being the.
Or you can do the horizontal. Horizontal boring and put the ears that better.
Right, and there may be a combination of, of doing that, of having tiebacks or soil nailing, something like that. Yeah, that, that, that could be done, done as well.
Sorry, I'm trying to get into the design of this, this is what they mean for.
Yeah, I mean, all, all in, all in all, because of the Franciscan sandstone rock that is here.
Yeah.
We do not need fortunately to go to those measures such as drilling tiebacks in or, or the like on this particular, but we've considered that for sure. That's the reason for the setback.
Okay, and one comment I will make is not to put trees with the deep roots close to the, I made that mistake and this rock easily breaks into the pieces.
Yeah, that, that definitely makes sense.
Yeah, so your landscape plan, make sure that nothing is closer to the deep, you know, slope, very, very close to the sloping area. And whatever plant you put in close by, make sure they have shallow roots. Yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
I just had one question. On this Bag report, can you explain to me what they mean when they say continued relatively limited slab failures are likely to occur in the future? What does that mean? Does that?
There have been occasional, what's the term I want? Slabs, which from that open face, which is oversteepened, it's, it's quite steep, which have on occasion over the eighty years at least since the quarry ceased operation have, have fallen down. If you walk below, the only way you can access is go way around. But if you look from below, you do see some small amount of rock fall that has occurred over these eighty years. And, you know, to say that there won't be any in the future, of course, would be incorrect probably. There will be small volumes, small rocks falling, but they, they will not imperil the house. It would take hundreds of years at the rates that have been occurring for there to be any concern for, for enough rock failure to occur to impact the house.
Okay, now, any other questions?
Yes, please. On the northwest side of the property, there is the fifteen-foot setback. The backyards of the houses on Tulare, it appears to be also about fifteen feet. So we have a nice thirty-foot corridor there. And it appears according to the landscape architectures, looking at G one point two nine. If I count in here, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, there's about ten trees slated for removal there. Have you looked at that particular area in terms of stability of that hillside after removing those trees? Because that's awfully close to the neighbor's property.
Could, could somebody point out where you're referring to on, on this map here?
G one point two nine, I'm looking at the landscape architecture sheet.
I, I personally frankly am not a great believer that trees provide much stability, frankly. And that backside is also in sandstone bedrock. There may be a little loose material on the surface, but I don't believe that removing the trees will substantially increase or decrease the stability of that slope. My personal professional opinion on that.
Okay, I, I was just concerned because if I was the neighbor on the downslope looking up the hill, I, I'd just be very concerned and I, I wanted your reassurance to them as well, that that will not be an issue for them.
Yeah, I, I mean, I made a number of the readings of the rock, of the fractures and the joints on that backside area. So there is rock there and, and I'm not concerned about the tree removal impacting the slope stability at all.
Okay, and then the, the. Okay, and then, uh, the, the new planting, is that a difficulty on that slope to stabilize those while the new trees take root?
Well, I mean, it's, I, I think that's more of a landscaper's, uh, purview, but from a geologic point of view, they're going to have to excavate and create some sort of a, of a well, if you want to say, obviously for the trees to be able to establish themselves. So that'll have to be taken into account.
And also the proper type of trees.
Yes.
Will not have a deep roots.
Right, right. I don't honestly know how deep the roots would be able to go anyway, so it'll obviously have to be a suitable species of tree for that situation.
You'll be surprised how easily they find the ways, the roots.
That's true.
They can just, unbelievable. Anyhow, uh, you left the, the card with Julia, right?
Yes.
Okay, I would like the copy of that, if you can give it to me.
I can give you one.
Because the reason I'm trying to get more into the geotechnical because there was a one project number of years ago, uh, that there was a proposal to build a whole bunch of houses over there. And we had a series of hearings, especially on liquefaction and, and views and all of that stuff. And liquefaction was a USGS map, that particular commissioner was presenting it and all that. So at that time, we had the Dempsey Moore people, you know, the Woodward Clyde and Dempsey, Dempsey Moore companies, they were in the olden days, and now they're changing to some of the...
I've, I've worked for both of them at one time in my life.
So there's some, some other companies took over. So they were the consultant and all that. So in case stuff like that comes up, I'll, I probably will be able to talk to you.
Sure.
Because it has to go to the councilman before we finalize it. So I don't know whether the council can bring this.
Through the, through the chair, this item will not be going to the council unless it's appealed. There's no, there's no council action required of this, if the commission makes it.
That's good. Okay, thank you so much. Uh, who's next?
Hi, good evening. Thanks for staying so late for this project and hearing. And my name is Helen, and this is actually my husband, Andrew.
Actually, or is it, is he?
My legal name in file is Zian, so I go by Helen. Yes, um, it's very exciting for us to came this far for tonight, and I brought our family. Just like you said, you're right, we are having our grown, grown family in two years. We didn't expect it. We have twins and, and a daughter. And yes, um, well, how, why, why we found this, right? It's our, actually, it's our dream to build our home in this beautiful town, uh, to grow our family in Brisbane. And, uh, you know, um, I came to US at age of ten. So first of all, when we moved here, we lived in San Francisco, and then we moved to Seattle, and then we came, I came back after I graduated in 2003. So one day, driving down 101 South Bank, uh, you know, my office is in Burlingame, so I work out in Burlingame. And I always noticed this place on the right side was, with houses and hidden in the trees. And I always wonder, wow, you know, who other people can afford to live in that nice town with, with views and looking over the bay? And, um, very, you know, very lucky that many years later, very lucky that I came, I came to this opportunity and, and I found the cells on the 99 Thomas from, uh, from meeting a client at his Brisbane home. It's just very casual conversations, and, and we realized that there's the sites on sale. And then I came back, I talked to Andrew, and I said, you know what? I really like this town, and I always dreamed to live in this place because we really like Sausalito, and especially we've been to, um, Italy, uh, the town called Almofe Coast. So the very close idea about that is this town Brisbane, so it's, it's in my heart. And, um, you know, uh, we came back, we discussed, and very quick, we decided to sell, to, to sell our home, and we have our home sold in San Francisco, and then get the money and bought this land. And, um, you know, um, you know, it took us very much effort and time, three years. And I promised my mother-in-law, you know, she's sixty-eight now, right? Yeah, at the beginning, I, I didn't know it'd take this long, but, you know, I, I, I sold her home, and I really wanted a home to give to her, and it's been three years. And, um, you know, and, and I really, I'm so excited that we have this hearing going on here tonight. And yeah, and, um, excuse, I'm so sorry. Yeah, so we, you know, we, we wanted, uh, we decided, we sold our home and we bought this lot, and it's been three years long that we've been working with the, the, uh, the planning and also our architect team. And, um, and, and we're very excited. Why we choose, um, Brisbane. And after I've been in my, uh, my career for a while, and I came across many residents that live in Brisbane, uh, I, I met many friends here. And the one, one thing I noticed is common is these people are very family oriented. They're very friendly. I came from a very small town, so I always really loved to live in a very, very small town area where I, where I know my neighbors, and I feel the safety that my kids will grow up in an environment like that. And, um, and, uh, you know, and, anything else, Andrew? And besides the neighbors, we, I, I really love the weather, love the weather, and also the green space and, 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 and the, you know, the, the, how to say? The, the view of, of this, of this land. So I really, really hope that our dream home that, that, that we have in, in, in our mind, to build this home, really can inspire all the neighbors and also the, you know, the, all of you to support us with this project, and hope we really can, can build a home and grow our family in the, in this place. So you have any comments?
Um, so personally, I grew up in Bay Area for twenty-five years, and going to school in Berkeley and happy working around the Bay Area for fifteen years. So for me, I really want to stay in Bay Area. So, um, my dream is to build a home that I can, um, fit in my families and grow my families here. And especially me and Helen already, um, only have our moms. So we want a house to be able to fit in everyone, to be staying there.
Any questions for them? Now, thank you so much.
Thank you.
What I will do is I'll ask the staff to put that comparison with the Italian town of Almofe in our Brisbane news, because that's a great accolade for this town, you know? So we need to find, and thank you very much for bringing this to our, to our attention. Okay, uh, anybody, and then we will have one slip from, uh, I guess we are done with the applicant, right? There is not anybody else on the, on the applicant corner that we didn't cover? Nope. So I have one slip from Mr. Dennis Bussey.
Dennis Bussey, forty-plus year resident. First of all, beautiful work. Welcome to Brisbane. Why I'm here is that corner is a hotspot. There's this applicant for that house, there's the Thomas house under construction right now, the one that burned and is being rebuilt. And if you recall, and you, a few years ago, there was the doctor that proposed ten or twelve houses.
These are still working on it.
With all the regular shaped lots, it was like a, like a, a puzzle. Nothing was, anyway. It got me to thinking, right possibly on their property or directly below, there's three or four cars, vehicles, that were pushed off the cliff. Many of you may know of it because I wanted to buy two of them. I was trying to find out who the owners were, that when I went up there, they were gone. And when I walked the property, they were shoved over the side. They're hard to see now because of the vegetation. If you walk the back road, uh, I don't know what you call it anymore, but you could, you'll see them there. And it was a crime because they were all perfectly good vehicles. So my question is, who's responsible for cleaning that up? If it's on their property, now's the time to do it. They could throw a line down and witch them up with no problem. There's all that huge equipment available, the tow trucks. Uh, there's a printing press the size of a Volkswagen bug up on Beatrice. There's a boat, a trailer, and a pickup truck over here. There's all kinds of junk on property. And I want to just get that on the record. I don't know what the city's policy is. If they make the homeowner do it, do they cooperate? But those vehicles that are there right now, in my opinion, now's the time to get them out of there with the cooperation of other property owners. Before, there's houses and children and kitties and babies all over the place. So that's what I want on the record. I'm concerned about the abandoned vehicles. And I believe the gentleman behind me mentioned he walked that road. He might have seen them. They're visible. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, anybody else want to speak again, or should we make a motion to close the public hearings?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now it's time for the deliberation. What's your pleasure?
I still have a couple of questions, if you might. And this will involve some of our experts here. There's a lot of eucalyptus trees on the property scheduled for removal. A lot of people will be applauding you and going, get them out of there. There are fire hazard in there. But there's one consideration. Everything has a yin and a yang side. And that is that there are many eucalyptus have been removed, many more slated for removal. And guess what's up in those eucalyptus trees? And it's noted in the biological report, raptors. They have to have high nests. I applaud the homeowners, the designers, the landscapers, the selection of native trees, the placement, the size, all of that. But I have one question for you. On the downslope, there's a bunch of eucalyptus slated for removal. Would it be possible to throw in a couple redwood trees down there? Because they grow tall, and you know tree species better than I do. But potentially just to provide something for the future? Because we have, we can see in the evenings all the time, all the raptors circling, and all these trees, large trees, because of, of large home, home and housing projects like this, they're all disappearing, and the raptors are getting more and more encroached. And it, it, it may seem silly, but I know several people on open space, and this is coming up more and more because we are concerned. And, and I applaud you. I want to frame this. I'm not trying to be hard. That you've really done an excellent job at the tree species, the selection, the placement. I noticed the different canopies, the way you designed it. I, I was very impressed with that. So any way we can squeeze in something that for the future, those raptors can have a nest? And you would know the tree species. And, and one other reason, if I may clarify, we recently had another project in a similar area down San Bruno that's near the Hatch Hatchi water pipes, and they want twelve trees removed. And guess what they are? Very large eucalyptus, as I recall, down the canyon.
Uh, 1093 San Bruno.
Thank you.
Two large trees were dug for us, but I think the point is well taken.
Right, so when we get the cumulative effect in this nice little canyon, this is where the raptors have been living. If we can provide them with something, I, I just, I would love to see that. And the homeowners would be leaving an entitlement to Brisbane and the future wildlife. And, and believe me, to see the hawks and, and everything circle at night, you'll love it. Because you're gonna be up in the tree canopy. Thank you. And then one other item, because the house, and this would be probably more for the architect, I commend you on the energy reduction with operable windows. We have lovely weather. You don't want to be sitting in air conditioning all the time. The breeze is lovely. Most of the time of the year, you'll have, even in January, I have windows open. Lighting, because you have homes down that hill, and because you know if you're on Bay Area, you can look up and see where that house is going to be, I'm concerned that this not be a big beacon of light sitting on top of the hill, nor that it be a problem for the homes down the hill. So if I could just ask that perhaps downward lighting instead of floodlights, so that any kind of landscape lighting be more contained to the immediate area and not vast illuminations, because it's also light pollution. And we're more and more being concerned about that. And you will in turn appreciate it, because at night, more and more in Brisbane, you can't see the stars because there's too many lights. But Brisbane, in its foresight, put in new LED streetlights, which contain the light downward. So that would be my two considerations.
Thank you. And the commission, a second?
No, no question.
Okay, what I'll suggest, Julia, is that we made a lot of comments, and some of that, you can incorporate that into the condition, conditions, or whatever way you want to do that. Would that be possible tonight, or we can...
Through the chair, yes, we can, we can add that. I, I'm looking for it. I believe there is a condition regarding the lighting, that it be inward, but I can check. If that's not there, we can, we can add that.
I, I read that, Ken, but it was not very specific.
Okay.
If it could just be tightened up a little bit.
All right.
And also the, the kitchen, outdoor kitchen.
So to relocate the kitchen outside the driveway area, subject to planning director approval of, of, as part of the building permit plans. Also, I have, um, no grinding of the cutoff tree stumps. And I, I specify cutoff because I, I, I don't think the intent is to leave, um, stumps above ground. We're talking about stumps that are actually to be removed, that those aren't all to be recycled on site, but that they can grind down the stumps to, to be below grade so they're not visible and a tripping hazard and that sort of thing. Also, no grinding of building demo or construction materials on it. So we can add that as a condition.
Ken, that section on lighting is under K avoiding glare, G 1.64.
Okay, you got it?
Got it, yes.
Did you get it? Any other conditions that you want to change or anything? Last chance, so we cannot take a vote now. What's your pleasure? I think we should go ahead and approve this project because it has a lot of pluses and minuses. And they've worked so hard for last three years, and the architect has done a real good job in designing this. It's a modern architect, which is not my favorite, but this is what the, the trend is nowadays, and, uh, so that's very good. And I think the landscaping plan is very, very thought out too. And there are some concerns with the soil stability and all that. So I guess the, uh, we made the recommendation for the city engineers to look in deeper into that at some point. And, uh, other than that, and also the, the kitchen area, the outdoor kitchen area, I think, I hope you, you understand why we're saying that, the reason behind that. So because that area has to be kept, uh, you know, clear all the time. Because even if you go to shopping malls and all those places, they always say, this is a fire lane, don't park, don't do anything there. So it's the same situation here. But I'm sure you can find some other place for it to, to have it. So with that, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve this with the changes that we recommended.
A second motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, and hopefully from now onward, things will go faster. And we'd like to see you, uh, in the Brisbane fairly soon.
Welcome to Brisbane.
Yeah, we had another situation where the poor mother-in-law passed away on 8th Thomas Avenue because it took so long. So, so, yeah, so, no problem. And thank you very much, all of you, for coming here and giving us your feedback, and take care. And thank you very much, all of you, for coming here and, uh, giving us your feedback. And take care.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Okay, we're going to resume our meeting with the rest, rest of the two items. Uh, I'll appreciate if you can talk outside. Excuse me. Can you go outside and talk so that we can finish our agenda here? No problem, thanks. Okay, uh, next item on the agenda is items initiated by the commission. Any of the commissioners have any items that they'd like to discuss or bring it up before the commission? Oh, I, I was looking at the other side, that's why. Okay, item initiated by the staff is, uh, okay, I changed the agenda myself.
I got my chance to talk after all. Um, well, just wanted to, if you hadn't-
I, I hope you didn't get upset that.
No, no, I think I'll get over it.
I get it, my chance and this guy pushed me off. Items initiated by staff, okay?
Um, just, you may or may not have watched the council meeting last week, um, but they did, the council did authorize some additional fiscal work of some baylands alternatives with residential component. Uh, you may or may not have heard that there was some issues about potential state legislation that might tie the city's hands in terms of land use decisions related to residential there. So, uh, anyway, that's where the council's last direction is with the baylands. Just wanted to update you on that.
Um, and we do have, oh, sorry, uh, the Commissioners Academy this year, Planning Commissioners Academy will be in Monterey in April. And I believe, um, the enrollment period is good for another couple of weeks. So if you want to email me or Alberto, if you're interested in attending, again, it's in Monterey.
Do you have the date?
Uh, we can email out more specifics, but I think it's in April first weekend.
Yeah, Commissioner, you should, you should go.
Oh, I plan to, yes.
I think you will learn a lot from that. So do we have enough budget for the more than one commissioner to go or?
Typically, that, that works. So, yeah, we'll see how many want to go and we may have a new commissioner by then as well, so. But if you're interested, let us know and we'll make it work.
Yeah, but if you have two weeks only to, to, uh, register, then the new commissioners will not be here.
We'll, we'll double check those dates. There may be, sometimes there's an early registration and there's the hard deadline as much later, but we'll work that out.
Yeah. And then did you take any of the other training classes for, are there any other classes available for her to?
Uh, there hasn't been anything local, um, but we certainly keep an eye out. Sometimes APA, American Planning Association, their local, um, branch has, uh, a one-day Planning Commissioner Academy kind of thing. And sometimes they have evening events. But, uh, we keep an eye out. If anything comes up, we'll send it to you and the other commissioners as they arise.
Okay, the other thing that will be really useful for the commissioners will be to have some kind of a training on, on EIR. And, uh, you know, there, there might be some, somewhere they will, they're probably talking about the EIR and the whole process, CEQA. So I think that will be a good one for the new commissioners to attend because, uh, I'm sure we will be looking at some EIRs in the future. And that's the most com- complex element of this whole planning process. So if you can find something that will be really good, so for it. Okay, now I'll go back to the last item. Is that okay? Items initiated by the commissioners. Anything by the commission?
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay.
Nope.
What you?
Nope.
No.
Nothing. Okay. It's a very fast-moving month. We already towards the end of the month and, uh, the application for the new planning commission, I guess, it's still one more month left. And, uh, so, no, one more week left, sorry. One more week left. So hopefully they will schedule the, the interviews fairly soon because we do need, uh, another, our terms are expiring, but, uh, you know, we still have one vacancy. So hopefully we can fill that very quickly. And with that, uh, who wants to make the motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn to the regular meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen at seven thirty PM.
Okay. You have a motion?
I will second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will see you all on February thirteenth.